Good evening. Welcome to the June 10, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. There is additional seating for those of you that are standing upstairs if you would like. Ms. Witten, will you now conduct a roll call for the board?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Your supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today humbled and thankful for your love, mercy, and grace. We ask for guidance, direction, and leadership while conducting the business on behalf of the county. We ask this prayer in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America. The people of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible,天地一體,天地一體.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial in to one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda? Resolution of appreciation to Dr. John Sheridan.
I'd like to read that into the record if I could.
Please.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to Dr. John Sheridan for serving more than 20 years as the Operational Medical Director for our county EMS agencies. Whereas in 2004, Dr. John Sheridan assumed the role of Operation Medical Director for the 15 EMS agencies within Rockbridge County, the cities of Lexington, Buena Vista, and Virginia Military Institute, all the while serving hundreds of EMS providers. And whereas Dr. Sheridan played a pivotal role in the leadership and direction on protocol development, ensuring that all EMS providers possess the requisite knowledge and comprehension to deliver exemplary pre-hospital patient care. And whereas Dr. Sheridan was instrumental in establishing the Rockbridge County Fire and Rescue Commission, where he served as chair for two terms. Whereas Doc, while working as a physician in the emergency departments in Lexington and Augusta, Dr. Sheridan dedicated time to addressing inquiries and offering constructive feedback to EMS providers whenever necessary, fostering a conducive learning environment and ensuring continuous improvement in their knowledge, skills, and capabilities. Whereas during his tenure as medical director, Dr. Sheridan supervised numerous EMT courses and contributed to the testing and authorization to practice of the initial county career fire rescue staffing. Whereas Dr. Sheridan's service exemplified great honor, integrity, and distinction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Rockbridge does hereby extend heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Sheridan for his unwavering service to all fire and EMS providers in our region and the citizens of Rockbridge County. Hopefully adopted this 10th day of June 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Somebody.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel. And I vote yes. Thank you very much. Chief Ramsey, will you?
In addition to the resolution that Supervisor Lewis just read, we would like to give you this plaque. It's not much, but we do thank you for your service on behalf of the Volunteer Association and the county and the crew staff, and we appreciate what you've done for us.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, wow. I'll take about seven of these because half of them, somebody has their eyes closed. All right, thank you.
We will now welcome citizen comments. Citizens are welcome to sign up to speak or use the Raise Your Hand feature online if wishing to address the board. This time is offered for citizens to offer comments to the board with the understanding that this is not an open dialogue nor a question and answer period. Comments should be addressed only to the board and not the audience. Our goal is to have anyone that wishes to address the board speak and for the audience in the board listen to listen and be respectful to all. The room must be kept in order, therefore there should be no clapping, speaking out, or other noise making. Anyone that is unable to do this will be asked to attend the meeting upstairs in the overflow room. Please know that if you're here to speak regarding the Hamilton Special Exception Permit Application, this is the time. The public hearing for this matter has been closed, but anyone is always welcome to speak under the citizen comment period of the meeting. Once you've signed up and when I call your name to speak, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Once the timer has gone off, please take your seat. Now, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am. We'll begin with Vicki White.
All right, Ms. White. Ms. White, if you'll just hold on one second, I do want to tell everybody that we have had written comments from Jacob Hamilton, Brian Lester, Barbara Durr, Kate Funk, Louis Hamilton, John King, Richard and Robin Connor, Rick Marks, and Rick Martin. Just, okay?
Hi, I'm Vicki Gottsy White. We've had our property on Irish Creek for 40 years. In 2018, we started building our retirement home. We hired a local architect, a local builder, and local landscape and, you know, craftsmen. And this contributed greatly to the Rockbridge County development. And if we think that if a wedding venue is put in, that it might devalue our property. We were hoping to improve our property and stay there through retirement. So we hope you will deny this application. We also have come together as a community on Irish Creek, and we're very concerned about our neighbors who are directly impacted by the venue. So we hope that you will deny the application and let us have our retirement home peace and also all the neighbors in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Is this an Eric White?
My name is Eric White. I live on Irish Creek, and I am opposed to the wedding venue application. I would like to just address briefly the fact that the Hamiltons do not live on Irish Creek, and I think it's important for two reasons. First of all, it's my understanding that every single wedding venue that has been approved by this board has been upon an application by resident owners, people who own the property, people who live on the property. And I think that the fact that they are residents of that property contributes to the responsibility, the accountability, the oversight, the management. It's one thing to, you know, it's important that especially for events like weddings with all the coming and going, things like that, that we have people there who not only care about their property, but they care about their neighbors. And, and for a best case scenario for the Hamiltons, if they get their 50 events a year, assuming for the sake of argument that nobody's going to be getting married on Irish Creek in January, February, or March, we're faced with the prospect of 50 events being squeezed into eight months a year, which means there isn't a weekend that could go by where life isn't impacted. And they get the benefits of Irish Creek. They enjoy all the benefits, but they don't have to put up with the daily impact, the daily interruptions that every other resident of Irish Creek has to put up with. And with all due respect, it's not fair and it's not equitable. And the second point is, is that there's been a lot of conversation about, there's been a lot of conversation about the freedom to do with one's property that you want to, that you, as you see fit. And, and it's a time-honored tradition in this country that people should be able to run a business out of their home, but this is not their home, and the calculus changes. The nature of the discussion has to change. And I think it's, it sets a very dangerous precedent for the board to allow a property which is already inconsistent with you. So in other words, the county attorney has told us, character of the neighborhood, property values, traffic, those are the things that are supposed, are supposed to drive the board's consideration. And, and we're already dealing with a property which is commercial in nature. Okay, they're, they're Airbnbs, and, and as has been discussed in, in the past, they've done a nice job of improving their property, and, and the way they're using it now is fine, but they shouldn't be allowed to piggyback and create new commercial activities which are wholly inconsistent with the rest of the property. And especially when it is so inconsistent with the true nature of that neighborhood. Many of the people who have addressed this board are members of families who have been on Irish Creek for well over 100 years, some over 200 years. These parcels were deeded out in the late, in the 1700s. You know, it's a history and a tradition which should be preserved. And I would suggest to you that the right thing to do is to do not yet.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thomas Clark.
My name's Thomas Clark. I live in Cornwall area. I have a piece property on Nettle Creek, which is off Irish Creek. I'm against this venue. We have a pretty small, close-knit community. A lot of my neighbors I don't see, but no one comes time, we all stick together. I'm a truck driver, a trade, been doing it 30 years. I've seen what developing areas does, Anorak Mountain, White Mountains in Vermont. It's all commercialized. Where you go, good old mountains, it's all commercialized. I mess with our little community. Not to mention extra traffic. Cornwall, got three grandsons that live there. All kinds of kids in the neighborhood. Nobody ever patrols it. 45 mile an hour zone. It's fly, fly, fly. People's got one thing in their mind, get one of the going. You add this much extra traffic to South River, Irish Creek, it's going to be trouble. So I'm against it, and I guess that's obvious.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Luke Tyree.
My name is Luke Tyree. My fifth great-grandmother is buried on Mount Nettle. My family's been there for some time. I'll try to just cover this as quick as I can. It's been said in these meetings that a major consideration in granting a special use exemption is increased revenue for the county. I understand the value of public service, and I very much thank each one of you for the thankless work that you all do at the local level because local government is really what affects us most on a day-to-day basis. If it were said that the quest for revenue can at times outweigh the existing heart of a community and that the will of the people themselves may sometimes come secondary to the goal of income, then could we not also say that the very purpose of elections for representation is to give voice to the many, to place checks and balances on the whims of the few? Our district is headed by Bob Day, who spoke in the last meeting that I attended, that his views were lockstep with the views of those who live and vote in the South River District, his district. It seems logical to me that the opinion of the elected official of a district that is most affected by a decision like this is also the most relevant voice. The rural and undeveloped nature of our county is the highest and best use of these lands, and the heart of our community is not second to revenue. And I believe that that was the consensus of this board when it made its opinion in the last meeting, and I applaud them for it. Agriculture, family farms with free-range chickens, small homesteads selling firewood in the mountains, retirement cabins in the woods, local towns, farmers markets, local B&amp;Bs, curio shops, antique stores, local canoeing down the river, hunting lands, and conservation of rare and unique mountain landscapes. These things that we hold as valuable for their own sake, they do not make as much money as would, for instance, large revenues, McMansions, or increased industry. If this venue were to be a success against what will inevitably be continued opposition by neighbors, and if also, it doesn't simply cannibalize the existing wedding venue businesses in other parts of the county, and it does bring a small increase to county revenue, it will be at the expense of the long-term residents of the creek, not to our public benefit. In this vote, there's a clear precedent to be set. The highest income generating use of our county would very well potentially degrade the fabric of the community that exists here, rural and peaceful as it is. And maybe all that I've said may seem to be an exaggeration, but I remember that I have friends in Albemarle County, older friends who remember watching what happens when someone, quote, "shows the rest of the country just how beautiful it was." My friends speak of how quickly multimillion-dollar hilltop villas and hobby farms replaced family farmers and small homesteads. And I have no doubt that with land valuation in mid-five figures per acre, the county income could increase substantially. But I also have no doubt that should this come to pass, the current constituency of this county, represented in this room tonight, would not be the ultimate beneficiaries of this development, and I imagine they would still be in here trying to have their voices heard just as they are now.
Thank you, Mr. Tyree.
Buddy Buchanan.
Hello. My name is Murray F. Buddy Buchanan. And I'm not a resident of Rockbridge County, but I've worked in this county for 12 years on an outsourced highway maintenance project. Before that time, I worked for 31 years for the Commonwealth of Virginia, retiring from VDOT in 2011. 2012, I met Mr. Hamilton and hired him in his capacity, his construction firm, to work on VDOT's maintenance projects, working in Allegheny, Augusta, and Rockbridge County. From 2012 until the VDOT contract ended in 2021, Mr. Hamilton and his crews completed many high-level repairs approved by the agency, VDOT. These included slope stabilizations, drainage repairs, drainage structure cleaning, and rebuilding, and roadway sweeping. During this period, I also met Mrs. Hamilton, Kendra. I began to learn and appreciate the Hamilton's work ethic and professionalism. I've watched JJ's Meat Shack grow from a tow behind trailer to the restaurant and catering business which exists currently in Buena Vista. JJ's Meat Shack is routinely mentioned as a food destination for people who travel throughout the Commonwealth. Now, I'll be the first to tell you that it's one thing to hire a company to work for your company, but it's another to hire them to carry out and complete work for you personally. My wife and I hired JJ's Meat Shack to cater two of our sons' wedding rehearsals, dinners at different venues. The Hamilton catering business was extremely well-received, ensuring those special days were stress-free success. The first rehearsal dinner was even completed in the height of a COVID pandemic and was handled with every precaution. In 2021, I hired Mr. Hamilton and his building construction crews to renovate a small cottage beside my personal home in the hamlet of Glen Wilton in Bottotuck County. The work was completed in a satisfactory manner, approved by all of Bottotuck County. Now, given my personal knowledge of Mr. Hamilton and his crew's work ethics and competence and the professional approval by VDOT for the bridge and the entrance plans, I see no reason why the proposed wedding venue would create issues with residents of Irish Creek. The potential tax revenue from Rockbridge should also be taken in consideration as well. And, and in closing, I don't, I don't think I have to tell you this because you know it. I've just gone through a reassessment in Bottotuck County. And for, for the people who think that their assessments are going to go down, look at Zillow. Look at the things that are going on right now all around us in all of our communities. Property does not go down. It's only going up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Louis Hamilton, Sr.
Yes, my name is Louis Hamilton. I would like to say that our family was on Irish Creek in 1710 along with the Woods family. They owned tracts of land up there. There was granite land. We sort of dwindled away from it, but out bearings has been in Amherst County, Rockbridge County since 1710, 1716, somewhere in that area to begin. And you know, there's no place in the United States that I know of, other than a national park or US Forest Service, that everybody don't have the rights to do what they want to do with their own property. We have places to go. We want any kind of recreation. I applaud the County of Rockbridge for having a beautiful lake for us to fish, do whatever we want in it, Lake Robinson. The road is only 16 foot going into that road from the main highway to the lake property. It's 16 foot wide. I don't know what a dangerous road is. I wish somebody would let me know because I don't know. When cars are going like this, every road is dangerous. The road going to Parish Creek is 18 to 19 foot wide. Stony run right below them there. Minimal houses, minimal cars is anywhere from 17 to 18 foot wide. So the road is very adequate according to the state. We don't have no control of that. Also, I live on 501. When I was about 23 or 24 years old, I built a brand-new home down there. When I built that home down there, it was peaceful and still is, but there was so much stuff going on now that didn't go on in. They put a subdivision down the river road down there. And people go and come all the time, plus they come up a river road all the time. And every time one of those cars come up a river road, we lay down in our bedroom, the lights come in it. And we pull the blind down if we don't want to see them. We like to look at the stars and things, so we leave it up. So it's a choice everybody has to make. You know, we all have to adjust to whatever's happening around us at all times. We don't have a choice. It's growth, growth, and growth. This gentleman over here said the last meeting, taxes had to go up. I agree with him another half. And we need every penny of revenue we can get in Rockbridge County to help our tax base. Not you guys' fault, it's just times. Times is all it is. So I'd like to thank you. God bless each one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Jessica Hamilton.
Hello, my name's Jessica Hamilton. I would like to express my enthusiastic support for my family's venue, Irish Creek Crossing. As a member of the community, I'm confident that our venue will contribute positively to the neighborhood while respecting its surroundings. One of the key features of our venue is its commitment to minimizing noise pollution. We understand the importance of maintaining a peaceful environment for our neighbors, and we've taken significant measures to ensure that any noise generated by operations is kept to an absolute minimum. Through careful planning and soundproofing techniques, we're confident that our venue will have minimal impact on the surrounding area. Furthermore, we're dedicated to implementing minimal lighting practices to preserve the natural beauty of Irish Creek. Our lighting designs prioritize as efficiency, ensuring that our venue remains respectful of the nighttime environment. We understand the importance of dark skies and are committed to doing our part to minimize light pollution in the area. In addition to our efforts to reduce noise and lighting pollution, our venue will also bring numerous benefits to the community from, from providing a space for cultural events and celebrations to fostering a sense of community and belonging. We believe that our venue will become a cherished asset to Irish Creek Crossings and its residents. Per the latest traffic study conducted by VDOT, the road conditions have been deemed more than adequate to accommodate the anticipated traffic flow for the proposed venue. We are grateful for the opportunity to contribute positively to our community and committed to being responsible stewards of the land and resources entrusted to us. Thank you for considering our proposal, and we look forward to the opportunity to create something truly special together. Thank you for your time.
Jacob Hamilton.
Good afternoon. I would like to express my enthusiastic support for the proposed Irish Creek Crossing venue in our community. As a stakeholder who deeply values sustainable development, environmental conservation, and economic growth, I believe that this venue represents a unique opportunity to enhance our community in multiple ways. One of the most compelling aspects of Irish Creek Crossing's venue project is the commitment to environmental stewardship. The development, the developers have demonstrated genuine dedication to preserving local wildlife habitats and minimizing the ecological footprint of the venue through low-impact lighting solutions and sustainable landscaping practices. Moreover, the economic benefits of Irish Creek Crossing's venue cannot be overstated. As a thriving wedding destination, the venue will attract couples from near and far, bolstering tourism revenue and supporting local businesses across various sectors. Additionally, the venue promises to enrich our community's cultural landscape by providing an intimate, tastefully designed space for weddings and other gatherings amidst serene surroundings. This venue will serve as a versatile space accommodating not only weddings, but also family gatherings, corporate events, and a diverse range of occasions. Regarding concerns about traffic and noise, the surrounding natural features and existing road activities mitigate potential disturbances, and the venue's limited operations represents a minor fraction of overall road activity. An independent noise assessment was recently conducted over a 30-minute duration utilizing a decibel reader. The assessment encompassed multiple points on our property as well as five distinct locations along the road frontage. Results indicate minimum sound levels, therefore refuting concerns regarding potential noise disturbances from the venue's activities. The sound test was conducted outdoors while the music will exclusively be played indoors. In my opinion, the indoor setting will effectively mitigate, if not eliminate, the already minimal noise levels recorded during the test. In considering opposing viewpoints, it's essential to prioritize the perspectives of the landholders directly involved rather than those indirect connections. The petition against the venue seems influenced by misinformation as there is no threat to public fishing rights. My family's longstanding commitment to the community, demonstrated through various philanthropic endeavors and business ventures, underscores the dedication to the betterment of Irish Creek. We envision a thriving future for generations to come on this cherished family land. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly endorse this Irish Creek Crossing's venue and urge the Board of Supervisors to, to support its approval. Embracing this project will promote sustainable development, bolster our local economy, and preserve natural beauty of our surroundings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Rayanne Muller.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rayanne. I've known the Hamiltons basically my whole life. When I was 15 years old, I went to work for the Hamiltons as my first job. For those of you that remember, this was when JJ's was still in a trailer. I remember being amazed at how I got to watch their business grow. As a young adult, it inspired me and gave me a vision that if you work hard, you can do anything you want. They literally built their business from the ground up. Over the time of working for them, they treated me like their own, taught me great work ethic, and I learned many life lessons working for them that have carried me on through life. My point of this is the Hamiltons are about to bring something great to the community, if allowed, and I know it will benefit many generations to come, along with great job opportunity for not only the venue, but for a lot of small businesses such as hairstylists, makeup artists, florists, DJs, photographers, rental companies, etc. The Hamiltons also are from Rockbridge County, unlike some of the venues coming to the area now. Other people have came in with, having no ties to the county and built venues and carried that money elsewhere. Whereas the Hamiltons have numerous businesses within Rockbridge, and they've continued to invest within their community. What better people to do this than them? I've also heard many concerns about the roads not being double-lined. However, as a young adult, I have many friends getting married all over and have been to numerous venues with roads being very similar, if not worse than the roads on Irish Creek, such as Seclusion, House Mountain Inn, Big Spring Farm, and Skyridge, three of which are all in Rockbridge County. I would also like to add that when looking for the venue, I know personally that I drive slower rather than faster on a road that I am unsure of. In addition, I myself have been to many events held on Irish Creek, such as church events. My niece and nephew my niece and nephew's birthday parties, shooting matches, et cetera. All of these events causing more traffic than usual, but they aren't a venue event. So these events are unspoken, but add traffic. In conclusion, the Hamiltons have set great boundaries as far as respecting their neighbors. I personally think that this is a great thing for our community, and it helps outsiders see what the little underrated Rockbridge County is truly about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Davis.
Pete Davis, Cars Creek District. I'm here to reiterate my comments from two meeting cycles ago. I believe it was the thirteenth of May. I'm opposed to granting the special exception for safety reasons, for aesthetic reasons, and I learned of the meeting on the twenty-eighth by cruising the YouTube channel of the supervisors a day late. I wasn't notified of it, but I made note of the presentation of Mr. Connor, whose house lies within, I think, a hundred fifty feet of where the bridge construction is proposed. And I can't speak for him, but I can say as a builder that built things for thirty years, I wouldn't bring a plan like this forward knowing it would impact someone that way, because everybody leaving that venue is going to beam his house at ten o'clock at night fifty times a year conceivably. It might be more than would happen, but I think the impact on him is pretty extreme. And so I'm just going to stand with the residents of of Irish Creek that are opposed, even though I'm not a resident. I've been going there since nineteen sixty-nine, and I spend a lot of time up there. So I'm going to ask you to vote against the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Tony Tyree.
Good evening. My name is Tony Tyree. I live in the South River District on Irish Creek Road, right across the road from where this venue is being proposed. Now, it's been stated several times at these meetings that this is not a popularity contest, and that's very true. It's not about personality. It's about the quality of life, the people who live there, and the character of a community that will be changed forever if this passed through. I have here a copy of the original proposal that was submitted back in March under the heading that says "Community Impact." It says, "The venue will be year-round operation, weddings, corporate events, reunions, and more." Right above that, it says it will be in operation eighty-five percent of the time, which is year-round. And also, under "Community Impact", there's not a word mentioned, but the impact on the neighbors, but the impact on the community. It's only the impact that would help somebody. And on this page over here, which is under the executive plan, mentions the Glamper Cottage, which is called Paradise. It's called "A Privacy of Secluded Wilderness: Truly a Mountain Getaway." Well, I don't know how you could have privacy, seclusion, wilderness, and a mountain getaway when you have a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot venue right on the same property. Just couldn't be more than a hundred, two hundred feet away. Down here at the bottom, it says, "Our goal and focus have been to preserve the beauty of the properties along Irish Creek and to share this little slice of heaven with people from all over." But that's what we are here for. We're here to preserve the beauty of Irish Creek and to preserve that little slice of heaven. And these phrases up here, "Privacy", "Seclusion", "Mountain Getaway," that describes our homes. That's where we live. And that, the value of our homes and our properties, it's not in the homes themselves, the structures, it's in the location. We all live in small, single-family homes, nothing fancy at all. We're lucky to have roof over here, but but value of our properties is in the seclusion, in the privacy, in the quiet, and that's what we're going to lose forever if this thing goes through. And I would like to mention that there are six properties basically right on the doorstep of this thing. My wife and ours, the Tomlin's, Georgia Pippin, the Connors, and two properties right around the curve from them. One is a single-wide trailer. I don't know those people's name right off. And there's another one that's owned by Todd Mahood, and he's renting it out to Mr. and Mrs. Allen right now. Of these...
It is. It is.
Okay, well.
Mr. Tyree.
You mentioned that there is a precedent for turning these things down. It's happened back and forth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Apologize. It looks like the pen skipped. Calvin Higginsbottom.
Thanks, Calvin Higginsbottom. I've been a lifelong resident of Rockbridge County. My family's been here. Worked all their lives. Own property on Irish Creek Road and have forty years. Feel like I'm qualified to speak about Irish Creek. Been, I've been up and down it my whole life. Still are up and down it. I'd like to comment about the nature of the property that Mr. Hamilton's worked on and the improvements that he's made. And it appears that everything he's done has been done far past most people's expectations. And I feel sure what he does in the future will be done with such taste. And the screening from the road for this venue, it's been there for years and it's still there. And it's funny there. If you go up the road and look at the rest of the stuff down there, how it's kept, and the way he's going to make his look, it's quite an asset to Irish Creek. As far as traffic, I'd a whole lot better fight the cars as I would the bicycles. So I don't think that's going to be a big-time problem with the road up there. As was mentioned, it's not very straight. You need to drive moderate speed if you're going to stay in the road. So it's speed is not a big-time problem. And I think the revenue, the enhancement to our accounting will only go forth by this project going on. And I live inside Irish Creek and or there right often. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael Fox.
Good evening. Michael Fox. I live in South River area. I'm here mostly just to say that the whole idea of this is in complete opposition to the current...
Mr. Fox, could you, they can't hear you back there. I hear a few people are trying to hear you. There you go.
Better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm here just simply to say that the whole idea of this is in opposition to A, the county's overall comprehensive plan, B, the current usage patterns in the area by the residents, and the future of the area also. Everyone here has been talking about how a wonderful person Mr. Hamilton is and how good his business is and how well he takes care of all of that kind of thing. I can only say that from my experience driving up and down Irish Creek Road for the last seven years that we've lived here, I go by that site five, six times a week. When he was doing that site development work at the site he's proposing to do the building on, I never saw a silt fence. I mean, he had track hose there. He had bobcats there. He had bulldozers there. And they're doing land clearing, pushing over trees, doing this and doing that. I never went on the site. I don't know, I read up close, but I never saw a silt fence. I never saw anything that was there to use as a soil sediment control plant. Nothing. Okay. You know, there are things you can get around, you can do things that will get you around that, but still, to be in a hundred percent compliance, you should have applied for a land disturbance permit as far as I'm aware. I don't know if that was done or not. Second thing is, at the last couple of meetings, you're talking about how wonderful the submittals were. I went through the website, the Rockbridge County website, and found finally the submittal for the variance that he's looking for and the documentations, the submittals that went along with that. Is that the whole package that was used as a submittal? What was posted on the website? I, anyway, the drawings that were used to explain for the septic tank and the septic field and all that kind of stuff were nothing more than what you could pull out of the Civil Engineering 101 Handbook. I mean, they looked like very simple drawings that you would find in any primer level of what a septic tank should look like, what it should be used for. It was that, the injector pump used, nothing more than...
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time is, is up, but I really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Stanton.
Very good statement, that's a brilliant guess. I have a vested interest in this area because of the flood and the horrific stories, lives lost and the scars that remain today. We did lots of research on South River, Irish Creek, and Nelson County for my book, Camille, Fifty Years Later. I caught my first big trout on Irish Creek thirty-nine years ago with our daughter with us, who's now forty-one. I've been fishing there for fifty years. It is so peaceful and serene that I would like to see it stay that way. On March eleventh, nineteen ninety-seven, I was a sergeant or lieutenant at an institution, and a good friend of mine was on the way to work. She was a coworker. Her name was Billy Dean Oles, and she was killed in a head-on collision right below this proposed venue. The roads are not safe for heavy traffic. And I said last time at the meeting that I was fishing there a month and a half or week before this and almost got hit head-on. And in twenty nineteen, we attended a seminar in Nelson County about LiDAR imaging, a sensing of method used to examine the earth's surface. It shows the earth without any trees or vegetation on it. It costs, the cost is enormous, a hundred thousand dollars for each flyover. The complete ball mountains with only large tracks, scars, bare places on the side of the mountains where detritus and debris flow are obvious. This is evidence that the flood always follows the same path. This proves that the floods of sixty-nine, seventy-two, eighty-five, eighty-six, ninety-five, ninety-six, all follow the same paths cut by floods hundreds or perhaps thousands of years ago. This research shows, not if, but when the next flood occurs, the proposed area will be heavily affected again. The current residents on the properties near the proposed venue have enough to do to keep the privacy, safety, tranquility of their lives intact without dealing with commercialism and undesirable trap. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
Thank you.
Rick Connor.
Rick Connor from Irish Creek. My mind goes blank sometimes.
Sure. Take your time.
My wife is Robin, lives with me. We've lived across from the Hamilton Place for thirty-four years. Later taxes, just like everybody else. And it's so peaceful, quiet there. But my deck is only thirty-three feet, believe it or not. My deck to the asphalt on my side of the road. And forty-five feet from my house to the asphalt. The cars would be around a hundred feet in front of my house going into the entrance of the bridge. It's right in my face. And car lights, mufflers, loud mufflers, all that. The car lights coming out would be directly in my face in bay windows, your living room, the dining and setting room where we hang out all the time and eat with company. It's a complete invasion of our profit. Complete invasion. The privacy and peace for the rest of our lives. I can't afford to move away, especially after the value of it drops. The whole community will be impacted. I'll be trapped there. The thousands of cars per year right in my face. No peace whatsoever. I'll be severely impacted by this. I mean it respectfully, but if you vote for this, how would you go home and sleep tonight in peace and quiet, knowing that my peace and aim will be ruined forever? Comes to my heart. I plead for you not to allow this business to happen. What comes next, if it does happen? If it's done, business then what? Irish Creek being ruined even more? The new Hamilton, it's just another business deal, but to us, it's our way of life in this quiet community. And our grandkids come up and visit every now and then from Crow's Day. We already got to watch them like a hawk keep them out of the road. You've got thousands of motor cars per year. My daughter probably wouldn't let them visit. We wouldn't get to see them unless we drove all the way to Crow's Day, but we can't. We love it up there because of the pieces. She just, please don't vote for this. Vote for this under any conditions. Don't ruin my home.
Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Jason Perry.
My name is Jason Perry. My wife Trish and I are the owners of JP Custom Solutions LLC. We're a small flooring business. We are here to speak on, in support of the proposed wedding venue to be placed at the Irish Creek Crossing property in the Soubias. Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton have been the target of some dubious claims, I feel, regarding the proposed project, which I'm sure you're well aware of. Many of these claims are untrue without merit and outright malicious. As practice, I do not get involved in such disputes until I have a vested interest in such. The Hamiltons, I consider to be of particular interest to me, my family, my business, and in my opinion, the greater good of Rockbridge County. While I am not a resident of Rockbridge this time, I frequent the Irish Creek area as well as the Lexington, Fairfield, Brownsburg area and have done so for over thirty-five years, participating in Rockbridge's thriving horsemanship industry, boarding, training, and showing horses. And as of late, I have found opportunity in Rockbridge through my LLC and have enjoyed good business and profitability with the Hamiltons and their entities. I have found Rockbridge County to be a most friendly environment to my business ventures as well. The fact is that the Hamiltons are an economic driver in the eastern Rockbridge area, not only through their restaurant and catering endeavors, but also through their septic contracting, rental, and lodging enterprise. They have served and employed the residents of Rockbridge County faithfully for over thirty years, and have shown no reason to residents or county leadership why they should not be entrusted to further their enterprise. The tax dollars on their food, lodging, construction, and rental enterprises fill local coffers and benefit some of those here in opposition to a great degree through schools, roads, public projects, events, and county services. Make no mistake, the Hamiltons are of Rockbridge, by Rockbridge, and for Rockbridge. Their business ventures have and will continue to support, employ, and service the local community. They spend great sums of money with other local businesses and bring other business people like myself to the area. Annually, I spend tens of thousands of dollars in Rockbridge County in Lexington, purchasing materials for food and fuel in support of the Hamiltons' ventures. Eastern Rockbridge could use a little more of this type of locally-based economic energy, which promotes and sustains and enriches the Rockbridge community. The Hamiltons go to great lengths to keep it local as the added goes. In closing, I can assure you that any project the Hamiltons undertake will have the utmost care taken to ensure it is of the highest quality, carefully preserving land, the environment, and the neighborhood around it. I'm sure your records on their past projects will show that the Hamiltons dutifully comply with the letter of the law, abiding by building and health codes, permitting, zoning, and tax law. I'm sure the results of the recent VDOT traffic study and the affirmations from geologists and well-drillers will affirm this care and... this care and attention to detail, and their existing projects on Irish Creek are a testament to that commitment. The Irish Creek Crossing project in particular was a former derelict property in great disrepair with junk, contamination, marijuana growth, and rundown buildings that has since been remediated and transformed into a beautified, economically productive space that attracts visitors and their dollars from all over to Rockbridge. I would ask that you put your support behind the Hamiltons.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Karen Moore?
Good evening. My name is Karen Moore. I am in the Walker, Walters Creek District, and Mr. Jay Lewis is my representative. I've heard many speak at the last meeting and some even sing and talk about how bad this venue will be for the area surrounding it. What has become frustrating is the Hamiltons have worked very hard and jumped through many hoops along the planning process to do the things the right way and make things good for their neighbors. They did not just take a storage building and renovate it and turn it into a rental property. It's what seemingly has happened close by to them. I've been to the proposed site several times, and this is a beautiful location to hold events. I have helped several couples plan their weddings, which has allowed me the pleasure of looking at venues throughout the state, leading me to believe that this location would be a great way to showcase Rockbridge County. Many from in and out of our area look for venues with a nature setting so that this could potentially become an out-of-town business or a beautiful, to showcase our beautiful county and also helping the local economy. Small businesses have had financial burdens over the last few years, and this venue would, would be helping a county native who works hard to grow revenue for this county. As I compare sites to others that I have already, already up and running in our county, I see no reason to decline the Hamiltons' venue proposal. What better way to support lifelong county residents than to pass their proposal and help a local business rebuild and grow? I know each of you is tasked with being, looking out for the greater good for our area and our county and not just think about four to eight miles of stretch from one county road. I truly feel that this venue would help with lots of jobs and even new personal businesses, opportunities for our citizens. This venue would be a place for class and family reunions, a place for families to come together and celebrate all that is good with life, a place for businesses to come and have team retreats for their employees. This in turn brings work to many of our county residents, from catering food to baking cakes, photography, and so on. I hope that you will consider passing the proposal and helping all of Rockbridge County. It is without hesitation that I ask you to consider passing this, and I thank you for your time and your service to our county.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Ashley Painter?
Good evening. I stand before you today to support the proposal for the establishment of an event venue on Irish Creek. I believe that this venture represents a remarkable opportunity for the area to thrive economically and culturally. First and foremost, the establishment of an event venue on Irish Creek would provide a much-needed boost to the local economy by attracting weddings, corporate retreats, and other gatherings. The venue would bring in visitors from near and far, stimulating spending in local restaurants, shops, and lodging establishments. This increased economic activity would not only benefit local businesses, but also generate additional revenue for the community through taxes and fees. Furthermore, an event venue on Irish Creek has the potential to enhance the cultural fabric of the area. Imagine the joy of the families coming together to celebrate amidst the natural beauty of the landscape. By providing a space for gatherings and celebrations, this venue would foster connections among residents and create lasting memories for generations to come. I understand that concerns may arise regarding potential environmental impacts and traffic congestion. However, I firmly believe that these challenges can be addressed through thoughtful planning and collaboration. In conclusion, the establishment of an event venue on Irish Creek represents a tremendous opportunity for the community to grow and thrive. By supporting this proposal, we can bolster the local economy, enrich the cultural offerings, and create a vibrant destination for residents and visitors alike. I urge the Board of Supervisors to approve this initiative and pave the way for a brighter future for Rockbridge County. Thank you.
Ms. Painter, you didn't mention your magisterial district.
I'm from, not from the area. I am from the Beverly Manor District in Augusta County. Thank you.
Lindsay Felix?
My name's Lindy Felix and I live in the South River District. And I spoke at the last meeting, and I had a couple of things that came up that I was concerned about. One was the idea that if this wedding, in the, in the debate about could we limit the numbers and stuff, one of the things that happened was, okay, let's say the wedding venue has a certain time to end, but all the people have rented the cabins. There's no reason why those people have to leave then. Then they just go to the private cabin, so the time can be extended. I'm a little alarmed that four cabins with the amount of people that they can house sort of sounds like it's an inn, and I don't think there was any neighborhood discussion about having that commercial venture happen there, even in these way of cabins. So this is like a step more. Let's have a step more and let's bring more strangers in. Nobody has things to say about the Hamiltons in bad ways that they do business. It's great that they do JJ's. It's great. They do other things. This is the wrong place for this to happen. We are looking to make this a place where we have wildlands and tourism, and boy, Irish Creek is so fine for that, and it is already an ag conservation district. We want those to continue here in Rockbridge County. This is wildland. This is not a place to do a venue. This doesn't have anything to do about whether the Hamiltons are good people or have done good business. They could do it somewhere else in Rockbridge County that's better suited for it. This is not the place that's suited for it. The neighbors are gonna pay. The phone, the phone, cellphone use up Irish Creek and, and even on South River is pretty damn iffy. So if somebody had an accident or something, they're going to somebody's house to get help at this point, at nine, ten o'clock at night. There's just so many reasons why this is the wrong place to do this, and I ask you really not to. And I also ask you to begin to consider, when you have a property that's in ag conservation and they begin to have things like four, four lodging places, including the glamping cabin, which I understood actually might have been built before the permitting, then at that case, this is like bordering on an inn, and I think that we're supposed to have neighborhood input when we begin to have commercial input, and this changes. This is not just somebody renting out a place on their home. This is somebody developing a commercial enterprise in an ag wild place, an ag conservation wild place, more conservation than act from when you had the poster up before. So in everything I see, the vote that you did last time where we disapproved, it was the right vote to go. Apparently, we just didn't do it right by protocol. Let's do it again the right way. Let's turn this down. Let's let the, these people who seem to be so good at business, go find the right place to do it. This is not the right place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kendra Hamilton?
My name is Kendra Hamilton, and I live in the Natural Bridge District, but I own property in multiple areas in the district. Good evening, esteemed members of the board. I extend my sincere gratitude for allowing me the opportunity to address you tonight. Again, my name is Kendra Hamilton, and I proudly, proudly stand before you as both the wife and business partner of Lou Hamilton. Together, we lead LKH Enterprises, JJ's Meat Shack, and multiple other business ventures, and we are deeply rooted in Rockbridge County. As a native of the county, I was raised on a farm in the northern region. Agriculture means a tremendous amount to me still to this day. I carry with me a profound connection to our community. This connection, coupled with our unwavering dedication to its enrichment, has been the guiding force behind all of our business endeavors. The proposal we'll bring before you seeks not just for zoning change, but an opportunity to transform our property into a venue, a space designed not solely for commercial gain, as it's being portrayed, but as a platform to foster community engagement. We envision a sanctuary where individuals can gather for retreats, reunions, corporate functions, weddings, and more, all while immersed in the natural beauty of the surroundings bordered by an expansive national forest and the tranquil Irish Creek. Our commitment to Rockbridge County runs deep, and we are fully acknowledge and address the concerns raised by our neighbors. With the utmost sincere and diligence, we plan to address those concerns. Firstly, the traffic and road concerns. We recently had a VDOT study where we superseded all those expectations for the length, the road, the bridge. And on speaking of the bridge, the bridge is really not even at question here. We can build a bridge on our property at any time and will do so for this parcel of land, whether the venue is approved or not. Secondly, the water and septic concerns. We had an engineered firm come out and assess, a sole scientist, assess the property, and those are the plans that were brought to you for the septic. We recently had a well expert come out, and I believe you guys all received that letter. This well expert has generations of business in wells. And on looking at the geographical landscape, had found that there is this, the wells going dry is completely unfounded. There should be no concern of that, and they have plenty of expertise, expertise in this. I do not. Thirdly, the noise. We are willing to do whatever is laid before us as to manage the noise. We have already, by the Planning Commission, said we would manage that indoors. I went to a wedding just this weekend, and the footprint for that was very small. Again, thank you for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Louis Hamilton Jr.?
Louis Hamilton Jr. You know, we're all kind of saying the same thing for the third time now. What I'm gonna say is, don't look at me as a businessman. Me and my wife both have twelfth grade educations. We've worked. We've had a dream, which used to be called the American dream. We came to Irish Creek sixteen-plus years ago. I hear many people saying, well, you don't live there. I'm sleeping there tonight. I stay there as much and more as I do on Buckskin Lane on five oh one. We have went through the proper process every time with getting a John Burleson to engineer a system. Then it had to be approved through the state of Virginia, Virginia Health Department. It wasn't something printed off of a computer. It, it was designed. The road, we heard road concerns. VDOT just, you have the paper just recently, took it from a fifty-five to a forty-five mile per hour entrance. They did a seventy-two hour speed study. Eighty-five percent based at forty-three point something miles an hour each way. So the EMS of Rockbridge Counties did their due diligence and said what we would have to do. We have went through every proper process, including with Mr. Slaton, to go through this county and do this right. Our neighbors have their rights. We also have our rights. And we work hard for what we do. The last thing I want to address is it's been made like we just come up there and just built a bunch of cabins. The first one we built, we tore down an old trailer. We built a new cabin. The second, we bought at tax auction. The lady passed, God bless her soul. We remodeled it, and that's when we did the tent and did that. The third one, we bought from people from Mississippi that was VMI people here. We just got our final inspection on it about six, eight weeks ago. We didn't come in and develop. We come in and fix things. It was rundown, tore down. And ironically enough, my wife handed me our tax tickets when we pulled up on the street out here and opened them up. And all I can say is, wow, we do our part. I thank you for your consideration. As I told you guys in the first meeting, y'all got a tough job. You got a decision to make, and somebody's gonna leave here unhappy. It's sad for either side. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Rick Marks?
Good evening, Rick Marks, Irish Creek. It has been a stressful month on our community, and I know that we have pushed you all hard. The reason why that is, is because a lot of the things that many of us that live out there hold dearly, we feel are in jeopardy. Things like our peace, our quiet, our safety, and for some people even groundwater and property. So I just hope you can understand where that comes from. My neighbors have done a really good job of making a case on the issues that you need to consider when you're looking at a special venue, the consistency with the comprehensive plan, sound principles of zoning, impacts to the character of the community, and impacts of the adjacent properties for which the bridge, the lights, and the noise just cannot be mitigated for the people directly across the street. In terms of taxes, the revenues from the nearly five hundred people that signed the petition will far outweigh what you might generate from the county's sixteenth wedding venue. I hope that helps tip the scale in our favor. I want to share just two things with you that I haven't brought up in my last two trips to the microphone. In twenty fourteen, my wife and I were awarded the Natural Bridge Soil and Water Conservation District Conservation Award for our efforts to improve habitat for wildlife out in the area. I don't say this to brag. I tell you this because I would rather you embrace these types of efforts that are good for the county, good for property values, and keep our rural community wild and beautiful, rather than saddle us with commercial development we don't need or want. And it's certainly not just us. Lots of our neighbors ante up out there. We have more adopt the highway roads than any place I've seen in the county, and all the signs honor families that have lived there. It's a neighborhood with an old-world feel, and we'd like to not see that changed. Finally, I found a passage in the comprehensive plan that's probably been forgotten in all the pushing and shoving over this issue, and I wanted to just share that with you. It says this about rural mountain communities. "The attractive landscape of Rockbridge County is a valuable natural resource. For many residents and visitors, the land has a special look that not even surrounding counties can match, even though many of the same features are present. The George Washington and Jefferson National Forests, South River, Irish Creek, the Maury and James Rivers, and a variety of mountain peaks have made for spectacular scenery." Let's not change any of that tonight. We've lived in the county for fifteen years, and we never contemplated anything like this. And we didn't know the first thing about your process, so that meant we had to come to a lot of folks in this building, a lot. And I just want to say that Chris and John and their staff were tolerant, fair-minded, and very, very helpful, and we really appreciated that. And thank you for your time and especially for your patience and your understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Marks.
Michael Todd?
Michael Todd, South River District. Uh, the Hamiltons are my neighbors, and they don't live on Irish Creek. They don't live in South River District. Now, they come up there and they bought a bunch of land, and they're dropping these Airbnbs, one, two, three. Airbnbs now, glamping tent they put up where they had the permit for it. Now they want more. More Airbnbs, more buildings, more noise, more cars, more traveling, more lights. More money. Because that's what seems like a Hamilton's doing to me, worshiping the golden calf. And I know where people go, worship a golden calf. Now I was raised to love my neighbor, help my neighbor, not shine my headlights in my neighbor's house. Now, the decent Christian thing to do would be to withdraw this application in the face of overwhelming community opposition. But they just want to shove it down our throats. Well, people up on the creek, they're getting upset, getting scared. Some of them getting angry. We need to end this right and proper tonight because the Hamilton's welcome on Irish Creek. It's wearing thin. We need to put a stop to this foolishness for things start to get ugly. Thank you.
Michelle Stanton?
I'm gonna try to read as quick as I can.
You've got three minutes, so take your time.
My name is Michelle Staten, and I live in Buna Vista. I don't reside on Irish Creek. My family owns a cabin one-eighth of a mile from the Hamiltons' property. This is where we spend many weekends with my mom, dad, daughter, her husband, and three small children. We feel that this is the Hamiltons' property, and with the approval of the board, they should be able to build the venue. A board member, which I think it may have been you, Mr. McDaniel, that said that he felt like many concerns were worst-case scenarios, which I agree. With the concern of traffic, there will never be cars parked alongside the road like it is for miles during fishing season. As far as people driving fast, normally when you go somewhere, or at least when I go somewhere that I've never been before, you tend to drive slower to make sure you get where you're going and to make sure no turns are missed. Concerns have been voiced about loud music. I agree, when you're just about anywhere in Rockbridge County, you can hear- I agree, when you're just about anywhere in Rockbridge County, you can hear noise echoing. However, one of the stipulations is the music will be inside of the building on the venue, not outside. There are concerns about drinking and driving. With those same concerns, shouldn't everyone in the area, they've been, then be concerned whenever anyone has a party and there's drinking involved? Trash is another concern, but please look at the Hamilton's property, how well-maintained they are. And if you have ever worked for Lou Hamilton, you know firsthand that trash would never be a concern. I'm sure the Hamiltons did realize when they purchased the land what the zoning laws and regulations are. However, exemptions are in place for a reason, and the zoning committee did pass this, and it was moved to this committee. One that has a very difficult decision to make, and I commend you all for handling things with grace, integrity. Because at these meetings, I've heard people question your integrity, told you what your job is, and shaming you for possibly approving this. The last concern I'd like to address is that it was mentioned that the business, that the community would have to monitor things at this venue. This is a family that has had been in business for 30 years. I personally have worked for the Hamiltons for several years with firsthand knowledge by working in the main office of all their businesses. They are more than capable of complying with regulations set forth for them and would never expect the community to monitor anything with the venue, nor would the community have a need to do so. At the end of the day, we all have our opinions, and we're thankful that our county lets us voice them. I have known Kendra since middle school. We took riding lessons at the same barn, and Kendra, however, had to work for her lessons, but now owns her own barn and horses. The concept of working hard is not new to this family. Kendra knew, Kendra and Lou are not transplants. They haven't moved here from somewhere else, making horrible changes to our county, but instead adding, adding to its beauty. This is a family that's worked hard for what they have, that wants to retire on this property, a family that Rockbridge County has been their only home, a family that I truly feel would never put anything around neighbors and landowners that would make their life miserable with all the what-ifs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kathy Tomlin.
Kathy Tomlin, South River District. I live on Irish Creek and have for nearly 40 years. The water is a real concern regardless of what anybody says. I've lived in my house for 37 and a half years. I know what the water patterns are. I conserve water. My sister does. The Tyrese do. That is a real concern. And somebody that comes up and just says it makes it so, it's not true. I think I've said enough over the last few meetings. I can't tell you how important it is for you to deny this. We, as a neighborhood, we've cried, we've lost sleep, discussed it, tried to figure out how to approach it. And it's disrupted our lives, threatens to really impact our lives. I've thought about moving, selling. I don't want to do that. I love where I live. I love Irish Creek. I love my home. We have a farm that we picked up the rocks out of the field to make it hayfields. They're lining the driveway on both sides. Only way to do it's by hand. A ton of work's gone into it. No regrets. I love it, but I don't want to have to move. This is not going to be good. It's going to take our lifestyles away. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlin.
Kristy Vance.
Hello, everyone. So this is my third time standing up here. I'm getting a little more comfortable every time. Appreciate, you know, everything that, you know, you guys have to do. It's a lot to take on. I just, I'm here to support the Connors' position. I am Walker's Creek District, but I have, I have family. My family has family land in the head of Irish Creek right before the road turns to dirt. We've been there a long time too, a very, very long time. So I'm here on that from there, but my in-laws are Georgia Pippin, Kathy Tomlin, and Clifford Tomlin is my brother-in-law. So I'm here to support their position. I'm also here to support the zoning, you know? We can't, I just don't, I hope we don't do commercialism and, you know, change national forest and conservation to do one commercial property, you know, and change a community that's been the same for literally centuries. You know, I mean, literally. And also, no matter how diligent and careful and they want to be, they cannot move further away from these properties. The Connors and the Tomlin's and Miss Pippin, they can't get further away. They can't. They're locked on that piece of land, so there's no, you know, there is no other. They can't, no matter how careful they are, they cannot mitigate that direct impact that will be on Ricky and Robin Connor's home and as well as Tony and Betty Tyree too, and my family. So I just, I hope that you take that direct impact into consideration and deny this application. There's other places to do these venues, you know, in the county that won't impact conservation and the forestry zoning. So I ask that you please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Tyree.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Betty Tyree. I live on Irish Creek Road, right across where the venue is. I live up on the hill. We, we are very concerned about the impact of our lives, our peace, and our quiet, and the value of our home and our land. We and our neighbors will take the worst of the noise and the traffic because then there's the our neighbors, the Connors, are the front of the bridge and will suffer more than anyone else to preserve the little slice of heaven and peace we have on our land. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tyree.
Wally Cochran.
My name's Wylel Alton. And I'm South River District, and I own property in the area up there. And based, I'm not a learned man, as you can probably tell, but based on all the education I've got, I rode down Nettle Creek and Irish Creek to get it. And my grandfather, Luther Jackson Mays, is the first man buried in the cemetery on Irish Creek. And we own, I own, or the property that my dad bought in 1933. And I had it all figured out what I was going to tell you guys.
Take your time.
Anyway, I just like to say that I hear all the praise that he's almost a Hamilton here. And I applaud Mr. Hamilton for the job he's done on his property. But news flash, there is a lot of people here that have beautiful property, and they've worked very, very, very hard to get it. And all I ask of you folks is to give them the very same consideration that you give us, man. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Clifford Tomlin.
Yeah, here we are again, folks. A lot of people got big dreams. I had small ones. I bought my place about 40 years ago, cleared it by hand, raised seven children that didn't belong to me on it. Kept cattle, hogs, chickens, milk cow. Some of them here tonight. And I'm directly across from this. And the Connors there, they're in the barrel of the gun. As far as Lou Hamilton saying he don't damage stuff, he's in the creek, tearing the creek up that I fished off for 40 years. So I know that he can't be trusted. Thank y'all.
Chris Deftshire.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Deftshire. I'm a business owner in Roanoke County. Spent my life on South Buffalo, on the Botany County side. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Hamiltons' integrity and respect, not only their integrity and respect, but being stewards of the land. We all, everybody in this room's afforded the same opportunity. We all Americans, we have same rights. We have the ability to build businesses, or we have the ability to work for somebody. Mr. Hamilton, Mrs. Hamilton have taken that opportunity to work for themselves and build something for themselves. But not only have they built it for themselves, they've built it for the community. They've employed people. They've fed people. They've taken people in. They've done things for people that most of the people in this room won't do. The those of you that do know Lou Hamilton, we spoke of trash. I've been up down Irish Creek 100 times in two months. You can look around on your way up the road, you can see the trash everywhere, rundown places. He's taking, he's taking a rundown property. He's turned it into a beautiful, beautiful place for people to gather. As far as the noise, not aware of any noise now that, that affects day-to-day life. There's also noise on it. After, after a certain time of the day, we all know you can't be loud, you can't upset the neighbors. But I guess the biggest thing here that I wanted to say was look at the room when we all stood up to say the pledge of allegiance. How many people can say that about the country now? But the, but the reason for that is, is I can imagine that the majority of the people in here are good stewards of the land. They're good people. We all come together, stood up for the pledge of allegiance, we said a prayer together. Can't forget what this country was founded on. And it was founded on brotherhood. It was founded on friendship, and men that wanted to work hard. And because Lou Hamilton had a dream, you can't be punished for that. He is the rightful owner of that property. He is a resident of Rockbridge County. And unfortunately for others, he has gone about things the right way. And I think you should approve this, this special exemption simply on the fact that he's done everything he's supposed to do to, to be able to have this business. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Jean Oliver.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jeanie Oliver, and I'm a resident of Irish Creek, South River. The past two times I was up here, I put a whole lot of work into writing out what I was going to say and making sure that I was well organized. And I decided tonight that I was just going to speak from the heart. When this whole thing started last month, my husband and I were primarily concerned about the safety on the roads, the change in our neighborhood, potential damage to the environment, and particularly road noise on Nettle Creek, since we realized that our property is going to be a main artery for people coming in and out of the parkway. As we've gone through this process, though, I realized that I'm not fighting for myself anymore. What we're fighting for is each other. We're fighting for our culture. We're fighting for the history of a piece of land, of a property that's in the middle of the national forest. Luke Tyree said before that our greatest investment is in protecting our land and in protecting our way of life. I'm protecting our neighbors. I'm fighting for the Tomlin's and the Pippins and for the Tyrese's and for the Connors. Their quality of life will be destroyed for something that doesn't have to be built here. We have no doubt that the Hamiltons are wonderful business entrepreneurs. They've built some wonderful businesses. They've made some beautiful cabins there. I'm sure whatever they build will be attractive and successful. But that's the problem. The more successful they are in this particular location, the more they steal the quality of life and the peace and the quiet of the people around them. Because once this one is successful, they're going to want to add to it. They only have 13 acres. They've got 13 acres. And no conditions are going to be able to separate those 13 acres from those seven neighbors that live directly across the street. People aren't going to come to the wedding to be inside. If you came out to Irish Creek to a wedding venue, would you want to be confined to being inside the building? Of course not. You're going to want the barn doors to be open. And it doesn't matter if you only let 50 people in or 150 people in. The music is going to be equally loud and travel right up the hill into all of the neighbors' homes and literally take away their peace and quiet. I appreciate their idea. I would have loved to have not married in a place like this, but I wouldn't have, I, I did actually get married in a place like this. We did it on a 100-acre hunt camp where there were no other houses around so that nobody else could hear our music and our hooting and hollering. And we spent the entire night outside at the fire pit dancing. And that's exactly what people are going to want to do in this place. So their business model is awesome. It's a great idea. They can bring a few part-time jobs, bring some extra tax revenue to the county, but not in this place. This is the last corner of the county that's up against the parkway that's meant to be preserved, and we can't sell that. We just can't sell that for profit. Thank you.
Isabel Vance.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Vance, and I currently reside in the Buna Vista here in Rockbridge. I grew up spending a whole lot of time, I mean, a whole lot of time. I practically lived at the Tomlin's residence and Georgia Pippin's residence. Spent and took every excuse I could to go up on the creek. Loved it, always have. It inspired me for my career, to go towards a career to help wildlife conservation. It influenced many parts of my life. And I have many reasons that I don't think this is the right place for a wedding venue. I've done the research, and millions, millions of dollars are poured into the Virginia conservation efforts, in part by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation was the resource I used. Just to give you a kind of an idea, it was 1.16 million just for the assistance and conservation of the forest canopy that has been steadily declining in Virginia. And that's just one thing they set aside money for when it comes to for conservation. So when, you know, I see how hard people have fought and how much money has been poured into all these conservation efforts, it just kind of frustrates me when I see it being so blatantly ignored in a case like this. Yes, it is called a special exemption, but what makes a place like this venue so special that it overrides the needs of numerous people and the lives of numerous animals that they can just be ignored like this? Irish Creek has a very long history. I've actually done some more research since all this started to went down. And people started to first try and settle here a little bit after the Revolutionary War. And people started more successfully settling here around the late 1800s. And they did pretty well for themselves even back then. But just put in perspective how hard it was to be so remote even back in those days, yet people still preferred it. They preferred to be really out in the middle of nowhere at these times. You're talking the 1800s. This was the middle of nowhere. But people, they did it. They chose to live there. They enjoyed their lives there for many years. And many people in this room behind me have, you know, uprooted their lives from states away to be firmly planted on Irish Creek. And with a wedding venue like this, they might want to uproot themselves again, and that's just not fair to a lot of people. And, well, I guess, could I have some extra time to speak for somebody else?
I really appreciate that. Really, I'm sorry, but thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all that who have signed up.
All righty. Let's look to see if we have anybody online.
No one with a hand raised.
Hold on one second. Is there, keep in mind, there will be no opportunity to speak once we get to this item on the agenda. So is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? I have to take the woman right back here. Is it, this? You come on up. Come on up.
Hear me. My name is Robin Connor. Rick's my husband. We live directly.
We live directly across the road from this preferred venue that's proposed to be built. I'd just like to say that just this past week, my, uh, I was sitting on my porch and my friend came to visit with us and across the road where they're going to build this. There was guys over there working and they were playing the radio. Now I could hear the radio on my porch. It wasn't bad, it wasn't loud, but I could still hear it. And I got to thinking, if I could hear this radio playing, then what's it going to be on our property? When it's a full blown party going on with music blaring right in our, right in our house. And I thought, well, that can't be, so then we walked across the road just to, just to see. And it hit me, these people are not going to stay contained in this building that they're building. They're going to be out on that property because it's beautiful and they're going to be out there wandering around down by the creek, around the fire pit, and they're going to be loud, they're going to be drinking, they're going to have a party, they're going to be laughing. And I'm going to be subject to that, me and my husband for fifty, fifty times a year, it's only two, two weeks out of a year that we're going to have any type of peace. And we just, we just can't see, we just can't conceive it that it can happen. My granddaddy owned property on that creek and he gave it out to all his family. And his family built their families there. We were raised, I lived where I live now for thirty four years, but I've lived on Irish Creek my whole life. We, we love it, we do not want to see it changed. We have nothing against the Hamiltons, they're good neighbors, we just don't want this. We truly don't want this venue on our property because it would be our property. It might be across the road, but it's our property that's in jeopardy. It's our neighbor's property. And knowing from other, other places that have had parties, it travels. You can ask my mother if she was here, she laid waiting night after night and had to listen to it on top of the hill. It travels up and you guys may scream and party and kids, whatever the noise is. It carries, there's no boundaries there, it's, it's nothing. I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate Mr. McDaniel calling me, talking to me.
Thank you.
Appreciate all, yeah.
We appreciate it, thank you. Okay, I had, you were next, I believe, yes?
Carolyn Shaner Birkins, Buffalo District. I hope you all are ready to vote and that you vote against this proposed venue, it's not the right place, and some people have very eloquently said that, so I won't restate that. But I do appreciate Mr. Day supporting his people in the last vote that was held, as well as the other people that voted against this. But as a reminder, visitors don't behave. And I'll just comment on a couple of things people haven't commented on. They'll be flying drones, that's not real exciting. They won't know where the thirteen acres ends. They'll be over other people's property, their dogs will run and their dogs will I I imagine that the event that they won't exactly be hunting, so their dogs shouldn't be traveling across property lines, but they they probably will. And also, what happens if the Hamiltons decide, oh, we built this, now let's sell it? People are putting, giving the Hamiltons a lot of credit and they deserve credit, surely. But they might not be the forever owners, but the damage will be done if this is approved, please don't approve it. Please don't approve it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Oops, we have two coming up, but we'll take her first, if you don't mind, come on.
My name is Ashley McConnell and I live just off Irish Creek. And I'm talking about the noise, it's interesting because I can hear the sound of the railroad when it's raining or when the humidity is high because noise carries. And I looked at the number of proposed events and the potential number of people coming to those events. And it comes out to roughly ten thousand people a year going up and down those roads. And, you know, not all at once, thank God, but cumulatively over the entire year, year in and year out. And that's going to impact me, it's going to impact my neighbors. Please take that into consideration, ten thousand people a year going up and down those roads. And the noise will carry the light unless you plan to build a dome over thirteen acres to hold it inside, which I don't think is entirely practical. The point has been made that the Hamiltons have been really good businessmen. And they've been very good about bringing in other businessmen to speak for them, not all from Rockbridge County. But our point is, we don't wish any ill to the Hamiltons, we just don't want ill to us. This is not the right place for this venue. That's the biggest issue, I think. This place is not the right place for this kind of venue. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ready? Yes, ma'am.
From Georgia Pippin, South River District, live right off Irish Creek, along Rock Lane. I thought I would start by telling you the story of how we ended up here. As children, we moved constantly, and when I was twelve years old, we moved to Washington DC. And four of us were up moving around there. We used to come through this area as children to go visit relatives and we loved it here. In nineteen eighty-three, I lived in Atlanta and my siblings called and said, are we ready to buy a property? I said, let's do it, we bought our first place on South River Road in nineteen eighty-four. We brought our families here, all four of us, we raised our children here. They are now grown, they bought houses here, they work here, now their children are growing up, buying houses here, working here. So we have contributed to this county considerably through the years and still do. And we've worked as hard as anyone else to get what we have gotten. And I don't want it taken away, period. And if something does happen, like my sister and I talked about with the water, what do I leave my children? Property that has no value. I understand Mr. Hamilton wanting to have his business there, and I do not begrudge him anything. But what I want to know is, what do the people of Irish Creek get from him? And I don't see us getting anything. And I respect the fact that he's had people come up here and speak for him. That's fine, but they've been family or business associates, who I'm speaking for here are all my neighbors. And we all feel the same way, and we feel passionately about where we live and our lifestyle. And I hope that you will keep that in mind in making your decision.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else in this room that would like to speak? I want you to keep in mind, we have after the public comments, citizens' comments, we have a few items on the agenda before we get to this issue. Once we get to this issue, there won't, will not be any more public comment. And we will discuss among ourselves and make a decision, and after that, we will have more work on the agenda. So I will ask you all, as it has been noted here, some of the room will be very disappointed. Whatever side that is, I I ask you all to leave this place as respectful as you have been during the citizens' comments, and I want to thank you for that. Right, any, anybody else that has anything else to say? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So we will, if that's it, we will close the citizen comments. And move on to approval of the May thirteenth and May twenty-eighth regular meeting minutes. Have you read? Reviewed?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes. And forgive me, sir, I did them in one fell swoop. Is, would you like me to separate those out?
We've been doing that, but in this particular case, I believe
I think everyone was present.
Present, so I don't think
Thank you. Consideration of the county appropriation resolution?
Yes, um, we request the board approve a tax resolution authorizing the appropriation and payment of bills for this period amounting to one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. And approving a general fund appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And that consists of revenue recovery funds to the fire and rescue volunteers. The, uh, I'll be brief, all the reports showing revenue to date is on track with the budget. Sales and Mills tax, especially Mills tax continues to outperform. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Consideration of Modine Performance Agreements, Mr. Suter.
Madam Chair, may I interject? I hereby abstain from all matters, discussions, or voting related to the board's consideration of performance agreement with Modine Manufacturing Company. My disclosure statement required under section two point two dash three, one, one, five F is on file with the clerk of the board and supervisors.
Thank you.
Okay, on March fifth of this year, Governor Yonkin announced that Modine Manufacturing Company would be expanding its manufacturing manufacturing operations in Rockbridge County. The project details include two hundred and eleven net new jobs from two thousand twenty-four to twenty-nine with the average salary for new, for new workers, and that's excluding benefits. Of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and four, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Capitalized investment in building construction totaling nine million, one, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Capitalized investment in machinery and tools totaling eight million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars. And capitalized investment in furniture, fixtures, and equipment totaling eighty-five thousand dollars. So the total capitalized investment for this project is eight million, eighteen million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. As part of this incentive for them to to expand here, the Commonwealth and the county offered an incentive and the county matched the state incentive of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, the state's comes from the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund or COF, four hundred and seventy thousand. And locally, Rockbridge County matches or tied or linked to machinery and tools. Tax grant of sixty-eight thousand, nine twenty-seven, local jobs creation grant of three hundred and thirty thousand and a building permit fee grant of seventy-one thousand, seventy-three dollars. And again, that totals four hundred and seventy, it matches the state for a combined nine hundred and forty thousand dollars incentive to attract them here. The corresponding performance agreements are attached in your package for review, they were posted online, one of them is with county and the other one the county is party two, and that's the the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund that I mentioned. These, these agreements provide for payment to the, of the county match funds passed through the EDA, the Rockbridge County Economic Development Authority over a period of five years, so it's not all at once. And it is subject to Modine meeting certain agreed upon metrics and benchmarks which are in these documents. The EDA did meet on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and approved the performance agreements. And I'll note that your board report asks you, asks you to consider adoption of a resolution. That is not necessary, our request is simply for you to approve these two agreements and authorize me as county administrator to take actions necessary to execute them.
Questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, Modine has been a great partner.
Absolutely. Next. We are at the Lewis Hamilton and Kinder Hamilton's project. Mr. Dryden, can you provide the board and attendees for a brief summary of where we are with the process and the board's option at this?
And I realize that this is a little bit of unusual process, so I'll just give a little bit of background, most people probably heard this, that they were here for previous meetings. On May thirteenth, the board held a public hearing to consider the application for a special use permit that's before the board right now. The public hearing was held and closed on the same day. Can you speak louder, sorry, the public hearing was held and closed on the same day. And then the board had discussion. They, under the, our local county ordinances, the board is required to take action within thirty days of the close of the public hearing. And they, at the here, at the board meeting on the thirteenth, two motions were brought before the board, one was a resolution to reject the application. And that res, that resolution failed on a vote of two to three. The other was a resolution to adopt the, to adopt an ordinance allowing for the special use permit. That also failed, a vote of two to three. After consideration and research and in contact with other attorneys that have worked in this area, I came to determination that no action was actually taken by the board. And this is consistent with the determination made in the previous case before the board, which would be the same, known as the St. Dustin's case. Therefore, the board was required to take action and the, and my interpretation of taking action is to affirmatively adopt a resolution. An ordinance either approving or firmly adopt an ordinance denying the application report. On our previous board meeting on the twenty-eighth of May, we held a discussion about this and it was determined that the, the action would be taken at this board meeting on June tenth. The, with the county staff has provided for the board some draft ordinances for the board's determinations to whether to adopt them or to not adopt them. The board should move forward by reviewing the ordinances represented for you. The ordinances and the board should needs to take, is recommended that the board takes action to either adopt an ordinance. One would be, if it's an affirmative, it would be an ordinance amending the, or ordinance was prior with before the board on the thirteenth of May. And that would be amending the language of the ordinance or and or the conditions which would be attached at the board's discretion. The other ordinance would be an ordinance denying the application. And that would also be subject then to discussion by the board and the board could make, could by motion adopt the ordinance to deny the application. One thing to keep in mind, and this is maybe my description of this might have caused some confusion in the past. But if either of these motions are passed, that will be the final action by the board, and there will not be an ability for the board to take up this matter after the passing of the ordinance, so even prior to the closing of this meeting. So it's, I know that I may have given a different impression in the past, but make that clear, which the board, the motion that you pass and either way will be the final action of the board, would deem the action of the board, and the matter will be closed.
You. All right, gentlemen, so here we are. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Sladen? Mr. Dryden?
Well, I have some comments. Maybe it might generate some from other board members. Not a lot has changed since May thirteenth for me. I appreciate everyone and I never felt disrespected by any comments or phone calls and, and I never felt disrespected by any comments or phone calls and and had a lot of good conversations with both sides. But tonight's not a question of the Hamilton's integrity. Or their abilities or what good business people are, they are. I've not known the Hamiltons long, only a month or so. I've had conversations and. I respect everything they try to do and and they're good people. It's not a matter of us trying to make money for this county by just changing the rules so we can get taxes. It's always nice to have increased revenues, but we look for correct fits. Now, prior to the May thirteenth meeting, we had received. Written message from Mr. Connor. That he had no objections. To this facility. And and that had a great influence on my vote because. He's the one that's going to be would be most directly affected. Mostly by vehicles leaving the venue. And it's not. The it's not the bridge, that's the problem, it's the location of the bridge. I don't think anyone here. Would say, I'd love to have a hundred cars shine their headlights directly into my house in order to get to the road. Now, though, and I know Mr. Hamilton and at one point, Mr. Connor, they were working together to try to rectify that. But I guess a rectification of moving the bridge would create a whole new site plan. And we can't allow a new site plan to be developed tonight. So it's my interpretation. That with the bridge being where it is, and Mr. Connor now opposed. To the project that this would have. An impact. On a budding property and that would be grounds for denial and that's my interpretation. I'd love to hear everyone else's.
I would say on that, that there's no doubt that he's going to be impacted. But the number of cars for the buy potential buy right uses are more than what would be what was being allowed under this. Permission. By the conditions that we have here, there's a. Be dot standard of average daily trips. A residential household would have and there's three residential households allowed there. So if we do three hundred and sixty five days a year times ten times three, we come up with, you know, a lot more trips than. And the conditions for this would allow. So I. That factors into considering this for me is what could happen. Without a special exception permit. Versus what can happen with something that is. Conditioned.
Right, and you could have three houses.
And there's no.
And they could be, but most of the time when people go home, at some point they go home and stay for eight hours. They don't go home and then leave at ten o'clock every night and.
That was the number I got to beat on, so that's the standard that I would apply.
Anybody else would like to? On this issue?
Mr. McDaniel, the last time I spoke, I think I spoke and cut you out. Thank you, where's Marilyn? You have nothing?
I feel as though I'm at the same spot I was last time, you know. What? Makes this the perfect spot. For something like this also makes it perfect spot for it not to be there, you know. The natural beauty and the. In the area, I, you know, as Mr. Lyons said. And I'm not just disputing anybody that's on either side, but. You know, it's really the Connors who are going to be most affected. But, you know. Also look at it as it's our job. You know, some people have asked, you know, why don't we just follow the district leader or the supervisor? You know, we're we're. Put here to do the business for the entire county. And the entire county has needs and the entire county. Needs revenue and stuff, so I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into these decisions, it's not easy, it's not simple. I appreciate everybody's comments, but it's. It's just been a very difficult process, I know for everybody because it's gone on for a month. And my apologies because that's probably my fault, I voted against two. Two recommendations at at the May thirteenth meeting, but. I do think the Hamiltons do wonderful work. In some ways, I think it would be. It would accentuate the area. Obviously, what they've done there so far has accentuated their. But then, you know, you also have to deal with the Congress, so.
We are elected to represent the people of our district. However, often. Our votes affect all citizens of Rockbridge County. This vote only affects the people of Irish Creek, the people of South River District. Therefore, I'll be voting to deny the special permit and I urge the fellow board members to join me in doing so. And with that, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that. We adopt amended ordinance denying the special permit use under for the following reasons, that the purpose that it would. Be adverse impact on the. Adjoining prop.
Mr. Sladen? Do we?
There's a motion.
Yes, it is a motion, just just checking, is that a clear enough motion, is that motion correct?
I, yeah, the motion is correct, I would suggest the purpose of clarity that you could ask Mr. Slade to read the ordinance, which would include the. The reasonings that the supervisor gave.
That's what I'll ask.
The entirety or the the?
I would say since this is the motion to deny it, I would the entirety would be probably most appropriate since it was amended from the previous language.
All right, at the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County, Virginia, held in the Rockbridge County Administration Center on Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty ten, actually be. June tenth, twenty twenty four, ordinance denying a special exception permit for Louis W. Hamilton Jr. And Kendra Hamilton for special events. In the agricultural unlimited use districts, A one located at Black Bear Trail, Vesuvius, Virginia, identifies tax map number sixty five dash A dash six. Sixty five dash A dash six A in the South River Magisterial District. Whereas Louis Hamilton and Kendra Hamilton have applied for a special exception to permit and operate a special events venue in the agricultural unlimited. Uses districts, A one per section. Per section of land development regulations, six oh two point oh three thirteen on the property on property located at Black Bear Trail, Vesuvius. Virginia identified as tax map number sixty five dash A dash six and sixty five dash A dash six A. In the South River Magisterial District. Whereas the planning commission reviewed this application and held a public hearing at on April tenth, twenty twenty four and has recommended approval of the special exception permit. To the board of supervisors, subject to specified conditions. And whereas the board of supervisors of Rockbridge County, Virginia, held a public hearing on this matter on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas legal notice and advertisement has been provided in accordance with section fifteen point two dash twenty two oh four of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. And in accordance with the Rockbridge County Land Development Regulations and. Whereas the board of supervisors has not taken action on this application as of the date of this June tenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. And per section eight oh two point oh three dash four of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations is required to take action on a special. Exemption permit, exception permit. Application within thirty days from the date of the public hearing. Whereas the board of supervisors, after review of the application and all other documents submitted by the applicant, the planning commission and the public. And after due consideration to presentations and comments at public at the public hearing here on. And after evaluation of this factor set forth in section eight oh two point oh three dash five. Of the Rockbridge County Land Development Regulations finds and determines that the proposed use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and the policies of Rockbridge County and public interest. Excuse me, now therefore be it ordained. By the board of supervisors of Rockbridge County, Virginia as follows. One, number one, that the board of supervisors finds that the granting of a special exception permit to Louis W. Hamilton Jr. And Kendra Hamilton. For a special exception permit. To develop and operate a special event venue in the agricultural and limited use districts, A one per section six oh three point oh three dash thirteen. Of the Rockbridge County Land Development Regulations on property located on Black Bear Trail, Vesuvius, Virginia, identifies tax map numbers. Sixty five dash A dash six and sixty five dash A dash. Six A in the South River Magisterial District of Rockbridge County would have an inverse. Impact on abutting properties and the special exception is hereby denied. Number two, this ordinance shall be effective on the date of its adoption, all ordinance or parts of ordinance is conflict with the provision this ordinance shall be. And. The same hereby repealed, adopted this tenth day of June of twenty twenty four.
So I have that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
I continue to support landowner rights and our planning commission, so I vote no as well.
And I vote yes. So, thank you very much and we'll move on to the next item. It was a letter our lawyer say what.
An ordinance was passed that denied the special exemption application.
Okay, good evening, have a good evening and a safe drive home. If everyone would please clear the room so we can continue our meeting, I would really appreciate it, thank you. Chris, would you mind closing the doors for me? Nine one one board. Mr. Taylor is willing to be reappointed, there are no other applications on file for the board's consideration, is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Taylor?
So move.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Mr. Welsh is willing to be. TCO, Tim Welsh, Mr. Welsh is willing to be reappointed and there are no applications on file for this as well, is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Welsh?
I move, second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the staff reports and does anyone have any questions or comments on those reports? And if not, we will, or does the board have any comments or committee updates?
I do not, I just believe in approving them, so if I may.
Okay, feel free, feel free.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day and I vote yes as well and committee comments and committee updates.
I have one from the Virginia Horse Center Foundation has the board voted last meeting, early last week, can't remember the exact day, sorry. To. Oh crap. I forgot my papers bring with me, but they they voted to establish a. It's a foundation, foundations have. No. They're going to dedicate a certain amount of money each year to endowment, to establish an endowment fund and and they. And then also in doing that, they established a mechanism to continually contribute to that bill for. So that's a very positive thing when endowments can get to a level where, you know. Revenues can be realized off of that. So it's another positive step that the horse center is taking for fiscal health.
Did they know what what it was for specifically, sometimes it's for an education, education or is it is it an endowment for to support the horse center?
I I believe it's for operations. Yes, sir. Now, as I said, there's. Time will tell, A, if it, the fund is of it becomes of level enough to generate what revenues and whatnot. So that that may change, but that's their long term goal.
I have one RARO update and. They have had. They have lost two of their employees, part time employees that take care of the fields. Or will lose them shortly. In July, I believe, and they would like to consider having a full time person for this position. This position would, counting the benefits and everything, cost an additional. Nineteen thousand dollars to the budget. Additionally, we don't know yet where they stand in terms of their budget at the end of the year, we don't, their wrap up has not been done yet, so we don't know whether they're. Operating on a deficit. Or surplus. I would. This is an issue that that is very. For Chad, he really is trying to make a decision is should he put out? A in advertisements for part time positions or can he put one out for a full time position, obviously it's not budgeted. He is requesting the localities to consider making this change in his budget. I have said that I would bring this to the finance and the finance committee and for you all to. Considered these things from. I did say I thought that you would want to know about the surplus or not deficit beforehand, so I've asked them to. Very quickly try to estimate where they're going to be on that. But it is something that I would like. Maybe the finance can happen in July, it. Anyway, to. Deal with.
Is the is the nineteen the the total cost, so our share, that's not our share, that's not just our share.
No, that's the that's the in addition, that's what.
So that would be split, so our portion would be.
The sixty percent of it is is what it would be.
Well, every little bit helps, yeah.
But they're not asking for amendment to their budget, right? They're looking at a mandate, I mean, what they're asking for is to go ahead and and see how it plays out and if we need to kick in some money at the end of next fiscal year, then we do. That what they're asking for.
Well, they're asking for however we would like to. Discuss this, if if we need a budget amendment, we would then ask that for them, I I don't know if you're. It was my understanding from from finance that that would be something that you would need. Certainly, you would need to know what position they were at the end of this fiscal year and. Also, there were things that we didn't budget this year fully, so those are the things that we need to consider.
I think if they have money left over this at the end of this year. They can use it to buy one time purchases, not pay a salary. And I I'd like Mr. McDan. If they want to hire a full time person instead of two part time and look within their budget. instead of two part-time and look within their budget, see if they can afford it. And then we'll look at it next year at budget time and look at, look at it, because we don't see their budget. We look at it when, towards the end of the fiscal year, if they run short, they should be able to find nineteen thousand dollars within their budget.
Have they attempted to hire part-time or advertise for part-time?
Um, well, they're in this posi-, I mean, clearly, people that would be interested in part-time would not necessarily be interested in full-time. One thing that, and I'm not quite sure where the other locality sit on this. The other localities might be more, I mean, this is a joint, joint, this is a decision that is made with the three localities. And one thing I did suggest to them is that at mayors and chairs, that we could get a reading on what the other localities felt about this position and then bring it to finance and see if we couldn't, see how you felt about that. That was, that is potentially a, a path forward. On Chad's behalf, I, I do agree in some, some ways, I, I, I feel that we did, we're not able to fully budget our everything people asked for last time. And so I, I don't like the notion of someone just getting ahead, right? Just, just basically getting the money because in front of other people. I don't like that idea. On the other hand, we have tasked him, uh, our director with a very difficult job and one that he is probably, he, he's doing a lot. And, and this will relieve that, the, the notion is that now his directors for, his program directors are doing most of the maintenance, so you're, you're seeing them do seventy percent of their work on the field. Now, keep in mind, they don't have programs that go all, all year. So obviously, that, there is gonna be some of that, but he feels that it's tipped the scales, tipped it just a little bit more to where they're doing more of that and less of their, of their programming, which by the way, we have tasked them with doing more and more programming for our citizens. So, um, both sides, and I think that it, it certainly warrants little more consideration and maybe a conversation with other localities and then bringing it, if, if finance would entertain that, um, and the whole board, uh, taking a look at that, then, then fine. Just asking, how would you like to proceed? I mean, we can say certainly no, just like, or we now, or we can say no later, or we can consider it.
My take, uh, I, I think you, I think maybe there's some questions and like, like everybody's saying, I, I would appreciate, maybe Mr. Suter and, and Mr. Coffey being able to get together and, and, and have some conversations, which is.
I think I understand it pretty, pretty well.
Which is what usually happens during budget time.
Right.
But, you know, I, I, okay, I mean.
So can I interject?
Sure.
And as a corollary, that, that the situation that, situation, uh, Chair Ayers is in is she's sitting on a, on a board that has, you know, they are preparing to vote whether or not to do this. And, you know, whether it's ten dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, she's wearing that hat on that board, but she knows she's gotta bring it back because you all have already adopted a budget as board, and you'd be appropriating it at the next meeting. So, um, it, it's very difficult without, without some sort of a nod from the, the funding body, the three funding bodies, that everybody's in agreement with that on a budget that's already been adopted. Uh, you know, to, to go out on a limb and say, well, we budgeted X amount, but now you're asking for Y amount above that to fund in an operational budget in the upcoming year. So that's the, the difficult position you get put in when you're sitting on a board there with one mission. And the corollary I'm getting, I'd like to share is, I'm going to jail commission tomorrow, tomorrow morning, and I've got to put, you know, I've got to be a jail commissioner. And there's gonna be an issue in front of us. I've seen a rough draft of it, but of a retirement policy that is much, much, much richer than the retirement policy that the board of supervisors has for its own staff. And, um, I was, uh, I, I voiced that at the last couple of meetings that, that I have to wear this hat too, because I'd have to come back to you and say, well, I'm gonna, I'm voting to fund something that we don't even give our own staff. So that's the position, the difficult position you get put in.
But I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate the situation she finds herself in. But at the end of the day, we don't know robbery's business. I mean, if they need the person to cut the grass, they're gonna need the person, I mean, they got a job to do throughout the summer and, and into the fall, and it provides our kids with the opportunity to participate and, and adults now with, with pep a ball and different things like that. But, um, I mean, if their board feels it's compelling enough to hire the person, then they need to make that judgment. No positions on any within the county or anything is, is guaranteed to be here forever. You know, if the budget doesn't pan out next year, they may have to get rid of the person. That, that's just the, the chance they're gonna have to take. But if they need the person, they feel like full-time is the best route to go, then that's what they need to make a decision on. I agree with Mr. Lyons in what I said earlier, you know, work through your budget, and if you run short, you know, whatever our portion would be, twelve thousand or, or whatever at the end of next year, we'll see if we have it and are able to help. I mean, that.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, they don't have it currently now. I mean, they don't have that money in their budget.
The money they've been paying to part-time people.
Yes, but it's, it would be almost twenty thousand dollars less.
Yeah, but that's not gonna hit until your last quarter of the year.
Your part-time people are not getting benefits, right?
Co- correct, they're not getting benefits, but, okay, so I'm just, I'm just playing this out. So if they come in forty thousand dollars short this time and they need another twenty thousand dollars, are you saying that this board is okay with, with, uh, it? Are we telling, are we telling them to go?
Are, are we saying they're gonna come in forty thousand?
I, no, I, I have no idea. I don't know that yet.
Come forty thousand dollars to the good and they could, we could allow them to carry that over for one-time purchases, which would free up forty thousand dollars in their current budget. But like anything else, uh, when, when everything comes to a halt and they run out of money, we have to, it's like the schools. If the school gets to June thirtieth and, and their budget is, is in the hole, we can't say, oh, we're not gonna fund you. We have to, you can't let, uh, the, let them go under. It, I think it's illegal. So if they feel they need a full-time person, hire the full-time person and try to accommodate with the money you have. And if you run out, then we have no choice but to assist you then. But, you know, if, if we give them twenty thousand dollars now and they end up thirty thousand dollars to the good, then that's, that's money we didn't have to give them.
But we don't necessarily have to fund them if they out of money, do we?
I, I think you'd have a hard time not.
Well, no, I, I, I think that you, like, like all of the people we fund, we expect them to operate within their budget. We, we don't say, oh, you blew through your budget.
Expect them to do the best they can, but we know they might be out of deficit because of this change.
Right.
But we'll deal with it when you get to it, because they might be able to absorb.
The people participating in these events and sports, do they put any money into it?
Yes.
Um, well.
For everybody.
There, there's fees. We have a very good fee of reduction for those that can't afford. In fact, it's free for those that can't afford it. So our youth, I'm not sure how the adult programs are run. I doubt that's true in, in the, in the adult programs. But we have grown considerably, and with that, um, comes, and if we expect him to continue to grow, we can't not, a- and we are adding fields. You know, Camden Field is, uh, something that we're using. I know it's in Buena Vista, but still it's something our youth use quite a mo-, quite a bit. Um, certainly Brew Baker is used a lot. We're, we're using Rivermont. Um, I would like to see more of the county use so that we'd be able to use that full-time person on more of our county fields. But, so I'm, and I'm in both, for me personally, I'd like to, I'd like to know what the budget was at the end. But if you all feel perfectly comfortable with giving them the nod if the other localities are in agreement, then, then I will, then we can tell them to advertise for the full-time position.
If that's what they want, but I'd feel more comfortable if I got to see their budget every year instead of just
I'll send you.
Dollar amount that they want, because this is June and leaders should have a little foresight to know that these things are gonna be expected. That's why we do start our budget process in January that we're growing, we're gonna need more next year. And I don't know what, what they put in next year's budget, or whether they looked forward to it or not. And, but I'd have a real problem to say, okay, we'll give you this money, and then we find out next month that they were short this year, because that was, that would not.
Well, looks to me like you had two part-time. Might have this one at soccer field, this one at baseball field, let's get two jobs taken care of. Well, if you hire one full-time, that person ain't be but one spot, so.
It's there twice as long, so it'd be all right. Because two people are there half a day at each field.
Thirty hours, yeah, thirty hours.
But can I add something else too?
Please.
Um, I, I really support what, uh, Chad is doing and, and RARO and everything. We're working closely with them, trying to identify some needs and that type of thing, and that, those things take time. But if you flip it to like, say, the nine-one-one board, if the nine-one-one board or the jail commissioner, some of these other ones that I sit on or someone else, and they come in and to say mid-year, they vote to approve a position, you know, and then expect the money to be appropriated by the localities. I mean, that, that, that becomes a slippery slope. If they, if their expectation is that whatever they vote for is gonna be funded. Now, again, not to say I'm not supporting this, I'm just saying on, especially when you get to larger dollars. Somebody hires two full-time people and, and then they come back and say, well, we hired them because our, our board voted to hire them, they still gotta get the funding, which is why I think it's wise for them to be doing what they're doing and coming through their membership to go back to the funding agencies, the localities, to say, you guys get with, with us doing this now before they do it.
Well, it's June tenth. If I can get an estimate, because the, the city is their fiscal agent. If we can get an estimate of what their wrap-up's gonna be, um, and then get the okay, because remember, if one locality nixes this all, then make sure Buena Vista and Lexington's on board. Can we then, uh, can, maybe Spencer can poll the, the board and, and we can move forward? If, if it's.
I'd run through the finance committee and.
Okay.
And.
All right, we'll run it through the.
And then get a recommendation from the finance committee.
Okay.
Which I think is where you started with this.
Yeah, yeah, it was. Thank you. It was a great idea. Thanks, Spencer. Um, is that good? All right. Then I, if anybody has anything else?
Yeah, I have, uh, I, I think everyone was aware of our, uh, girls, uh, lacrosse team at the high school recently competed for state championship. Fell a little bit short, uh, after a terrific season, but it got me to thinking about a, a lot of the athletes and, and, and students there that participate in, uh, whether it's individual, uh, extracurricular activities or, or team competition, you know, that go to postseason. It'd be nice if we had a way of recognizing their efforts and their accomplishments throughout the year. I don't know, maybe, uh, Spencer could give a Dr. Thompson to try to get a list or something. Maybe we could recognize them at either our last meeting in June or our first, or meeting in July, uh, for their excellence. Uh, it, it, you know, uh, Rockbridge County High School has, has, uh, had a turbulent thirty years. Or you know what, you know, you had three community schools that, uh, came together to form that and, and, uh, it hasn't always been embraced by the community. But I, I believe that, you know, the community fully embraces the athletic side of it, right, wrong, or indifferent. But it's a way for people to get behind it and support it, and, uh, I feel like that we ought to showcase their accomplishments.
We as a school board did that, didn't we? I, I feel like we did, wouldn't.
I, I'm not, I'm not trying to do a whole lot. I, I think they just need to be recognized, you know.
That's what I'm saying, is I, I think they do, so by talking to Dr. Thompson, I don't wanna do it the same night or so. You know, we, we, we need to coordinate, is what, it was where my comment was going.
I'll certainly speak with Dr. Thompson. I, I think the proper way to do it, to, to keep it fair and even, would be to have the, the school board or administration identify, um, maybe the same list that they are recognizing, uh, to make sure we don't miss anybody. Um, you know, obviously, there's, there's academic teams and, and, and other, you know, band and everything else, and.
We did the Destination Imagination Clubs, you know, always were, were recognized.
We ought to set a criteria, because are we gonna do district champs? Are we gonna do regional champs? Are we gonna do state champs? Are we gonna just do everybody? And, and I, if we ought to do it three times a year, if we do it, because there's three seasons. But I think come, I think to come before the board, it ought to be special. And I think they get recognized by other people, but I think, I think we ought to limit it to those that, you know, are all-state members or make it so a state championship game, so that it's, it's a, a select group, but it's a special group.
Anything else?
You know, it's not like we gotta recognize them at the next meeting, so while we talk about it and figure it out. And, you know, in the meantime, you can, you know, talk, Doc Thompson, see what they come up with.
I think this would be an excellent topic on the agenda for the school county executive committee meeting.
Perfect.
There you go.
All righty. We all talked out.
Mr. Jar?
Do you have a second? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day? I vote yes. It's okay to what? Leave? Yeah.